Parkport, a trailer from a tractor trailer, old rusted farm equipment, car engines, tarp's, trash, and other various large debris. I've had many conversations with Mr. Witt regarding his property. He told me the process which he laid out last meeting. After three years of delinquency, the delinquent parcels will be listed in the paper of record, which is the Time Water Review, then will be sold at auction. That first conversation was summer of 2015. Knowing that info, we purchased the house. Since then, we've done extensive repairs to our home, are active in our community, pay our taxes on time, actively vote, partake in few cleanups. I subscribe to the Time Water Review with sole purpose to see tax auctions for this border of the lot. Since June of 2017, there have been zero tax auctions published for King William County. Every thirty to sixty days, I follow up with the treasurer's office and short and short who would be a judge that has handled this matter. April tenth and nineteenth, I was informed it would be listed in the paper within ninety days. Those ninety days came and went, nothing listed. I followed up mid-July of nineteen, was told it would be in the paper the next month or two. Two months later, still nothing listed. I followed up in September and was told the attorney was out of town and would hear back on Monday. Well, since then, I have sent five more emails and forty-plus Mondays I've come and gone, and still no follow-up or update from when the auction would be posted and paid. I understand what was said last meeting regarding delinquent taxes as a moneymaker as they get paid eventually. However, if you sold properties at auction, does the county keep the additional revenue? For example, the lot next to me has around $3,000 in taxes owed, plus the $2,500 that was mentioned by Mr. Witt that run through the system, with a starting bid of $5,500 to give a case. So if that lot sells for $10,000, wouldn't that be an additional $4,500 of revenue for the county? If that is done with twenty-five percent of the new four hundred lots that are delinquent, wouldn't that help with the budget? Last meeting, there was a lot of talk about financial shortcomings with the county's school system. Without ever selling these properties, you are also encouraging your residents to not pay your taxes or pay whenever you feel it, which I do not believe is the precedent you want to set. Also, the neighborhood wants this piece of land cleaned up. This is a nice one. It's visible for my property, my neighbor's property, and everyone who lives on the four drives on that and the Herring Creek Road. To summarize, I understand it's about dollars and cents for the county. What is more than that for the residents and the neighbors? A lot of these dilapidated properties cause appreciation to the surrounding properties due to neglect and when there's nothing done about it, it makes me wonder if relocating to King William was a mistake. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
I'm Hubbard, thirty-seven, thirty-six, Herring Creek Road. I also attended last month's meeting and was a bit baffled with our treasurer's response to concerns expressed for delinquent property taxes. Almost four hundred properties with thirty years' delinquency, which is about $2 million, and as I figured, about sixty percent of the county's total annual real estate tax revenue. At the same meeting last month, Dr. White spoke on funding requirements for our schools, including the need for buses. My thought at the time was, this uncollected tax is about twenty new schools. Like Mr. Levy's case, I know of other situations that don't fit the typical scenario presented by a treasurer. I have a neighbor that has seven years' delinquent in property taxes, owing the county over $22,000. The property has fifty acres and the portion could be sold and paid taxes. The owner chooses not to sell any of their land because the county's message is typically, pay what you can, when you can. Our treasurer's explanation for not collecting delinquent taxes included complexities of bankruptcy, extra work for his staff, starting and stopping payment plans, expenses for attorneys, and administration for an auction. He also stated that the annual interest and penalties for delinquent taxes was a good source of income for the county. But of course, that's only when you collect it. Virginia state law allows the auction of real estate on December thirty-first following the second anniversary of the date on which the taxes have become due. I was curious as to how other counties handle delinquent taxes when I talked to several other county treasurers. Hanover has a collection department. Real estate auctions occur twice a year, automatic, for any delinquent taxes three years in the rear. Most of the small counties around turn delinquent tax collection over to a third party. Middlesex after two years, King and Queen after one year. When the internal or external, once turned over to collection, all activity is handled outside the treasurer's office, including an auction if necessary. All expenses for the collection service are taken out on the auction sale proceeds. After taxes and expenses are paid, the remaining funds are turned over to the circuit court, if not claimed, the funds go to the county's general. This appears to be the case with Mr. Levy's situation. I've worked around large corporations. It's hard to imagine an organization operating efficiently when the department responsible for income collection has no accountability to those responsible for budgets or operations. Maybe time to look for a good way to do business. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
I'll let you guess what.
I'll follow along with Chris.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here today representing a group, a group of customers of Virginia Tree Farms, residing in each of your five districts and in the town of West Point. In 2018, I took on a daunting task, leaving my job and becoming a first-generation farmer, starting legitimate agribusiness in this county. Eighteen months later, after I set this business up, I was told by the commissioner of revenue, maybe you should be charging meals tax on your salad, even though that wasn't what I was told when I set that business up. Over the following weeks, you get a lot of dialogue, back and forth. Initial justifications that were all given to me, that were provided, easily were proven wrong. Finally, when she was left with no other justification, she told me, Chris, I don't understand why this is so hard for you to understand. I'm the commissioner of revenue, it doesn't matter what you think. That was one year ago. Since then, this county has racked up $31,000 in legal fees and counts. We've accumulated over 60,000 salads I would have to sell in King William, even come close to selling to Great Union. Well, there are many justifications, some of which I've provided to you in your handouts, that I believe exhibit my product and its facts. We're gonna talk about just one tonight, that serving size. This is a grade-school term. It's one that's on every single food product that's manufactured in the state of the United States, in the United States. You ever go in a grocery shop and you walk up and down the aisle, every product made by a food manufacturer has serving size on it. Defined by the federal Food and Drug Administration. It's recognized by the American Heart Association, both of which have flyers in there. And it's a fourth-grade standard of learning in our Virginia schools. Serving size has meaning, whether you like to recognize that or not. Tax law cannot be left openly vague for interpretation. The same laws cannot change across county lines or as a new commissioner comes in. Let's take, for instance, a new commissioner comes in and they say, well, a square foot in King William is now no longer twelve inches by twelve inches, but six inches by six inches. Are we gonna allow that? Maybe a pound is only fourteen ounces so that our gross vehicle weights go, and taxes go up. It's ridiculous to think that interpretation of a word that has meaning in society can be so easily misconstrued. What happened to all those campaign promises that we talked about last year? Right? Every one of you supported the diversified ag and King William Farm Bureau Ag Vision. There were comments like, we're gonna curb regulations to harm businesses. We're gonna support growth to offset homeowner taxes. I wanna support hard work, self-sacrifice, and creativity. That is exactly what I am doing on my farm. A lot of things that I've heard from, from the board of supervisors are things that you can't do. Right? So tonight, let's talk about the few things that you can't do. I went and did some research. I think one of the things that we should talk about is Virginia Code fifteen point two. That allows the board, it may require any reports in its opinion the business of the county requires. Board may inquire under the official conduct of any county officer elected or not. Board may subpoena witnesses, administer oaths, and any evidence it requires. If any witness fails or refuses to obey any such lawful order of the board, he shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor. The commissioner of revenue is accountable to the board in all matters affecting the county and shall perform such duties, not inconsistent with their office, as the board directs. You have powers to, provided to you in our state of Virginia tax code. So, let's speak out publicly on the matter. I would love to know how you guys feel about this. Is this something that you support, this $31,000 that we've spent? Do you believe that this is a legitimate tax that we're trying to charge to your constituents? I personally don't, but I haven't heard anybody's opinion except for my own district supervisor, Mr. Moran. Three, I think you should require the commissioner of revenue to present to the board, let's hear about the meals tax. And when that happens, I think a question that should be asked is, where is the meals tax guideline document that's required by King William County Code that was put in place over a decade ago? That has not been authored, has not been published, and over a year I have been asking for this document, and still we don't have every other county with a meals tax ordinance has it. It's in the code of King William County. I think another question is, how do you justify spending $31,000 in legal expenses to question a word that we teach to our fourth-grade students? It is also important to note that Virginia's Code, Section twenty-four point two dash two point three, gives the board and the citizens the right to petition the court to remove from office any elected official, constitutional officer or not, for neglected duty, misuse of office, or incompetence in the performance of duties. Last thing I'd like for you guys to do instead of telling me what you can't do, is start to stand up for your constituents. Start to stand up for your small business owners and small farmers as you said you would in last year's elections. Take it interesting what they're doing and listen to their concerns. So show some passion for the issues and drive them to resolution. Maybe the $31,000 in legal fees would've been better spent having explained these powers that are granted to you in the state, state. Time is up. I will summarize with one final point. In this area of lack of trust of government, the institutions, this is an opportunity for you as board of supervisors to show transparency and demonstrate leadership on your part. When too few of the elected leaders seem willing to, are able to rise to the challenge of their office, it's an opportunity for you to step up, rise to the expectations of your constituents, and restore some of the faith that's been lost. Show the voters how you uphold your oath and do your best to represent the interests of the county. Thank you for your time.
I don't think so. I'll double-check. No one's made any comments or asked? No, sir?
And it is, it has been amended as people notice under the red light.
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Since that was in the agenda, we have two representatives from the school board here tonight. I figure suggested maybe that you go up and speak on that, just in case those people in the audience might get a little better understanding of the resolution twenty dash forty-five.
Good evening. The resolution is to move some of the money from our split levy funds to our capital funds for fiscal year 2021. Some of that computers for the high school students that must be replaced and we will use VPSA funds, but we have to have a fifteen percent match, which is about $58,000. The King William High School gymnasium speakers have been non-working for about a year. They're no longer repairable, so at this point, we really need to replace those as we move forward. Parking lot at KWHS, if we do not resurface this lot at this current time, we're gonna have to mill it and redo the entire lot, which would cost us about $300,000 in future. The fire panel at AES, which is a Quentin Elementary School, is failing and currently we need to get that fixed so that we can be within code. That will also help with the King William Fire Rescue that every time we have a bad storm is having to come and help us with that need. KWHS, the fields, athletic fields are in need of a new lawnmower. We've been trying to make the life of that lawnmower expand past those needs. At this point, we're having to pay for a vendor to help us with that, and so we'd like to replace that lawnmower so that we can do it in-house and not have to pay an outside vendor. Cameras for buses. We're in need of six additional cameras to fully outfit the current buses. We're asking for one at this time. We don't wanna hit our capital funds, our split levy funds too hard because we do have some possible pending needs that we will need some in the future for. Some HVAC systems at Hamilton Homes and along with some HVAC systems at the high school that are past their twenty-year use-to-life that weren't covered through our energy-efficient project that we did last year.
Where'd you go?
Sure.
We started. The camera system, what are you getting for $4,800? That just didn't seem like a whole lot.
That's the cameras that go on the bus.
I know, I mean...
And then it hooks into our network so that we're able to watch the cameras or play back.
So then they come back to the school, they download?
Yes.
Yeah, there's no way it's transmitting across the county.
No.
If it does, we're gonna use that.
What it is, it's front and back. It also catches some of the other stops, so they're able to get a full view of what's going on on the bus at all times. You can pull that down through a device and use that if you have to do an investigation on an incident on the bus. So it covers it all.
It's absolutely a good idea. Just $4,800, you seem like a very low amount.
Yeah, that's what we get now when we get new ones. They actually outfit the new buses with those, they come with it. Some of our old buses, we're still trying to outfit, so that's what would cost to retrofit and put that up together.
And just one other item that caught my eye, only because we dealt with it one time here. Buying a lawnmower for $10,000, that is gasoline, is it not? And if it is, you may wanna think of going diesel because it's gonna last about twenty years or twenty-five years, is the only thing I would say. And I think it's a bit more than that.
I'll check with Mr. ...
That's only because we dealt with buying one here before. It shocked me the price, but when I found out how long it lasts, it was, it was really worth it.
We'll look into that. I think that's a good consideration.
Thank you.
Presentations, we have a resolution on appreciation for presentation to Susan G. Russell.
Whereas Susan G. Russell was appointed to serve on King William County Board of Social Services in July of 2016, and has been an active member of the board for four years. And whereas Ms. Russell has served as chair and vice-chair of the King William County Board of Social Services. And whereas Ms. Russell has been a faithful advocate for meeting the needs of those in her community and is sought solutions for those who are underserved without the warning recognition. And whereas Ms. Russell has been diligent in her commitment to staff and administration of the King William County Social Services. And now therefore be it reserved that the King William County Board of Supervisors expresses its appreciation to Susan G. Russell for her valuable contributions to dwell in the citizens of King William County and the administration and staff of King William County Department of Social Services. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution expressing the sense to King William County Board of Supervisors on this manner shall be conveyed to Susan G. Russell and shall be spread upon the reading minutes of said board of supervisors.
Mr. We have a non-holds business. Any recommended revisions to the King William County Procurement Manual as the auction of King William directed by the county services?
City needs to have one. Resolution twenty dash thirty-one is presented tonight for final approval of the procurement policy updates that were presented on June eighth, 2020. Finance office has been in contact with and received general terms and conditions that are to be included in all solicitations. No other terms are approved yet to form by the county attorney as required by Virginia Code, Section fifteen point two dash one-two, three-seven. If edits are needed to the terms, our county attorney will review requests and advise. Staff recommend approval of resolution twenty dash thirty-one.
Now, what we could ask them to do is to have the attorney look over what they presented to us and make sure he doesn't have any edits or suggestions. And they've done that. And so unless the attorney has any objections he writes mine, I would give approval of resolution twenty dash thirty-one.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Barber?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Next item, we have one of the agendas on daycare relief fund update. It's on the destiny of the county minister.
In your packet is the information created as requested for additional information on the programs that we are proposing to use for the capital funds. Under the memo summary states the effective use, needing, the receipt of the funds, and all of the activities that are required today. We were notified on July eighth by the Department of Treasury that there would be a reporting requirement on the funds. And we have gone ahead and set that up with the town of West Point so that they submit their report on their expenditure to us. And then we go ahead and our finance director will then approve our standard accounts so that everything is in the same reporting system and you will be receiving the same reports once it's up and running. The reporting system will not start operating in a section. So what you have in front of you is a recommendation for the funding. The first thing is the King William County Public Schools. It lists the items that the school has got requested after utilizing their current application directly from the KILLS fund in the total of $414,306. Travis Wolf, our system engineer, has been working with the school to get more details on it. And Dr. White is willing to step up and speak to any of the items that they are requesting with a bit more background information. And I do believe that you do have something new that you want to add.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Sacks. I appreciate that. For the items that we're looking at here, they're all technology-based to help us with our blended mind to include mobile hotspots, Wi-Fi's, software for students as well as teachers and administration to make sure that we can take care of the need, as well as computers for our teachers to ensure that we can deliver blended learning opportunities for our students. We found out this weekend that Virtual Virginia, the distance-only platform that we were gonna use for our sixth- to twelfth-grade students, they had no longer, they have no other spots. They were going to guarantee fifteen spots free per course. That is no longer the case. Apparently, some of the larger Northern Virginia divisions got hold of those and no longer have that. So what we're gonna look to do, I don't have pricing at this time, is to look for another online or distance-only platform. One that we are hoping is going to be less expensive, but also something that we can use for instruction directly instead of using a vendor for development of the instruction that we can do on our own. We're looking at Admittum. And it also provides for assessments to critique the growth and progress of a student, but it can be developed up to also deliver online instruction. So we're hoping to use that. Again, I do not have quotes. Again, I do not have quotes. We just found out this weekend and we discussed it with our principals today to figure out if this is an acceptable alternative.
You earmarked the sites where we can put them.
We have, we reached out to some of the churches and we got responses from all of them. We're still waiting on some of them. We do have buses outfitted, or we are going to outfit buses so we can deliver it to sites throughout county.
That's if we don't need the buses for transportation. So we're looking at a mixture to try to get that out there.
With the weak signals that we have in this county, how is this gonna work?
Well, we could extend the bus signal. However, the problem is, when we look at some of the Wi-Fi sites, depending on the user that we, the vendor that we use, if we go down the county, we have no signal because it uses cell towers. If you go up the county, all of the services work. If we go down the county, the only service that worked was Verizon. But that is also one of the more expensive options.
What type of range, say up this end of the county? How far, you know, how close could you be to that?
I will, I will refer to Mr. Ruck.
We've tested three different vendors. T-Mobile's spread, which actually, the King William ends right at where our offices are. And it extends all the way north. And I went almost to Fredericksburg just to test the range for the whole county. And they're very strong. And Verizon, that area, is also very strong. Going south from here, it was very spotty even with Verizon. From the area that Mr. Stone, who's our Director of Operations, and I looked at the student population, if we had to give one of those students, only twenty percent would qualify based on their address to actually receive the service.
Is it any potential of using the ALI library outside?
Yes, that is actually one of the hotspots, or I shouldn't say hotspots, one of the Wi-Fi spots that we actually utilize in the county. They did an assessment and it was schools and the library are the only two entities that had Wi-Fi accessibility.
Can we add some equipment maybe? Because I know you could max that out. Correct.
So currently, we are using public Wi-Fi at the high school and at the middle school. So our community can connect as well onto a guest Wi-Fi.
I was really thinking of, if you need to purchase something to help the library, maybe that's stronger or more capacity.
We can look at that certainly. I do know that we are using.
That's, that's to save our fiber. It's, that's enough, man.
And we are gonna outfit with the CARES Act money. We are looking at also outfitting additional signals to expand at Aquint and at Cool Spring. So those will be other sites that our community can go to as well.
So how many bad spots you got?
We'll be good. We'll be good around the schools, but everywhere else, I can't vouch for.
Yeah. Pretty much. You know, I know that there is the three hundred foot tower at Augusta Lumber, it's a sprint tower. Because I use Sprint for my internet service. And I have heard of some of Mr. Lee, the organization that does the Sprint, and I don't know how I was working with T-Mobile merger, but off of that Sprint service does very low-cost free services to educational institutions. I'll make sure that you have that information tomorrow. I'll email to you guys. I know that at Red Reed, for instance, they use KQNET. They get this because they're up on the hill. So we can maybe reach out to somebody in the session there to see if there's an option to hook up in that area. Because I know in this district, it's going to be, even with Verizon, it's gonna be pretty dead throughout unless you get right up to this four hundred footer at Colossi and then there's nothing else.
And we realize we can't, you know, do it all what we want to do as much as we can to provide service for our families and our students. To make sure that, you know, it's gonna be a challenge, but we want to help as much as we can.
Bobby, can we add some equipment here or Travis? That they could actually have a hotspot from here?
It's an option. If that's something we want to look into, absolutely.
Yeah, I think, I think we have to. Because it doesn't look good starting out as a.
It's gonna be tough, but we appreciate all the help we can use. But your, your concept is put these Wi-Fi hotspots on buses. Certain hours, they'll be at certain locations. Children, parents will know if they want to download or upload something. That's the concept.
Yes, sir. And we wish we could have something more permanent, but unfortunately we can't. And unfortunately, I need access to the twenty-four seven in case something goes down. You can get it prepared back now.
I've known you guys. You know, yeah, this is gonna be the biggest challenge area here and then of far reaches of your district. But if we can, you know, just try to find as many partners as possible. And I'll bring everything I can think of and encourage everybody else here. Anything that they can think of is a potential there. Let's do the best we can for everybody. But yeah, best of luck.
Are these vendors able to give you a unlimited plan? It's a special through the state to schools, just moves and take off. Some of them are working with us. One of the intricacies of the CARES Act fund is we can't do subscriptions, but some of them are willing to give us if we purchase a product or vice versa, some iteration of that. So they're working with us, but then there's still the expense. And then is it going to be a viable product for our students and parents to use if it's not consistent with the law? So we're trying to, you know, get the best product we can and make it work for most of the communities we can.
Now, I did see where, this is your ID.
Yes, Mr. Jitsa Marki.
Can you assign these services to where we recognize the MAC addresses of the ones that the home looks at? So two of the three vendors we're working with, Kajit, which you named earlier. I saw something. We can provide it where only our devices can connect. And the T-Mobile Sprint option as well, they have the ability for us to only be able. You left ten thousand of those? Verizon was a problem so anyone could connect. But we were looking at the unlimited plan because of that. In case, we don't want to throw back our students, but maybe all our family students.
So of the four hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and six dollars allocated, and I say that very loosely because I think that the board understands that these funds will need to be shifted as new requests come in. Some uses fall away, others arise. So we do have the four hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and six that the schools can begin using. I did request from the superintendent that he provide me a memo stating that the school board had, you know, discussed and voted on a proposed schedule for the coming school year so that we have something that draws a line in the sand. So no matter what, if it does change, it's not going to impact us because we will use that as backup for any level of audits as to why we're gonna have to start proceeding to spend the funds. The next category is local business support. And I have set aside approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand for that. If you will note, we have created several documents. One is an application that will be going out on the website and Facebook. It will allow businesses to start looking at what they need to provide to the county on certain expenditures that are eligible, the documents that are in the attachment. There's two different documents. One is a little bit more detailed than the other, but the second one provides a way for a business to appeal if they feel like their reimbursement should be approved and the county decides that it should not be. We're trying to make this a fair and broad program as possible, but at the same time, make it manageable for the county. I've listed out the type of companies that can request. We also know that we're probably gonna be looking at providing some minimal funding possibly to some of our agencies like Humid Bay Agent or Miramax Center or some of these regional contracts that we are in. They are playing up against the same things that every other businesses. The good thing about those businesses is that they are shared regionally. So new requests that they would make of us would be brought to the board and would be one compared to maybe some others. But we do plan on going ahead and starting to market this program to the local businesses and making them aware of process and how to file the application. And then we will maybe bring the information to the board. But if the businesses meet the criteria and can provide us the documentation, you will go ahead and start discussing files. The next category is economic development authority. We had a meeting last month and the EDA has been distributing grants. They had requested from last fiscal year to be able to roll forward funds. They had come up with a grant program which immediately got derailed when COVID came along. And they changed it up to be able to assist businesses that have been impacted by COVID. The EDA is requesting some additional funds for them to be able to distribute. They may stay with the program that they have in place and the attachments and the form and the criteria included in your packet as well. But they also, at their August twelfth meeting, plan to see if there are other avenues at that point that we want to look at. The Kansas River County has determined that possibly there is a better grant-type program that is out there that would be more beneficial. So I am asking that we allocate fifty thousand to the EDA for that. If they do not expend it or the board thinks that's a little bit high, then we can just move some additional funds into other categories. And the last primary category is for the county itself. We have a document that we have sent out to all of the department heads explaining exactly how we want all requests made. Any request made through June thirtieth, which was the end of the fiscal year, is on a reimbursement basis moving forward as of July first. It is a request first, get it approved, and then you may do your purchase and be reimbursed with the CARES Act. We were also notified by Judge Bonjol and Patricia Norman that the courts are going to be looking at springing in and having more trials. We've already been notified that the public are gonna be doing evenings and weekends. And of course, you have to have social distancing. And one of the things that Judge Bonjol wants to make sure is that he has adequate mental health requirements. Alternatives, sorry, alternatives. So he did ask us to prepare the unfinished queen of the courthouse and have that set up. And he's not asking for a great deal, but that is an unfinished queen. So we will need tables and chairs. We will need to definitely disinfect it because of the number of court hearings that we've had in here designated to full-time custodian over there. Choose that, just to make sure that everything is clean. And there are some other requests. So those were some of the things that we and I anticipated the last time I brought this information to you. And that's the way this thing is going to try out is that I think every day we get new requests, new information that we hadn't even thought about. But to date, I want to say that we have reimbursed the county for its expenditure part due to the fortune of about forty-four thousand dollars. And we could go ahead and purchase some laptops for those individuals that can load work in case it comes down to that. But as I stated, we are being very conservative and requesting that departments make the request upfront so that they can be told if the CARES Act funds are eligible for the federal budget. And we're allocating roughly about a hundred thousand to that. At this point, we don't think that the county is gonna need that full one hundred thousand, but just like the courts and Judge Bonjol's request, that was unexpected. That could be another five to ten thousand dollars. Fortunately, the schools have donated some chairs and tables to the Martin Rex Program and so we'll be able to utilize some of those without hopefully having to extend any funds. But there'll be other HVAC units, portable HVAC units for that queen associated with one electrical outlet and some lights.
That, that's where I was getting ready to go because I knew what that room looks like. It is stubbed open, there's nothing in there.
So we're gonna make sure that whatever we purchase, say, portable units, that we can use them in other areas once all of this is over there.
This is the, the area that you had intentions of where this thing happens? To build up?
Are we saying, hey, the size of this room?
Probably about twenty-one hundred fifty.
It's not real time.
We were, we were gonna use it for offices?
Yes, for the BJA, government, triple C A, and then the court services for the juvenile.
See, the problem, and I know, I think I know where he's going, is the jury trials that are gonna start happening because we're running out of time on some of your time limits. And they're gonna have to start doing them right now. They're prohibited. They're gonna have to kick them back into.
And Judge Bonjol did let us know that there may be a possibility that this full-time is used for a trial. So.
It's over here is not great. We discussed this mainly for inmates.
It, it's gonna be a challenge, but you know, you're gonna try to adapt and make sure. We also are providing this, we're giving some trainings for, you know, but registration, not but registration, we have census. The census workers need a place to come and try. And so we're gonna provide the board room on multiple different occasions so that they're employed in this environment. But so that pretty much covers what we are looking at currently. You have a little bit more detail in your packet on what we're requesting. And as I stated, these categories of your dollar amounts are gonna have them flow. We will try to stay to them, but that's why probably at every work session, the board being, we will give you an update. And if there's a major change, you know, in bargaining level. We received just under one point five million. We allocated a fortune to the town of West Point of about two hundred and eighty-five thousand. We have funds earmarked for the schools, local businesses, the EDA, and county reimbursement. And with that, that would leave us right now, if we actually spend all of those funds, about four hundred and seventy-one thousand. Granted, we have these funds until December, February. And I do believe that there will be the July, September, next few months that we will be able to earmark these funds for. But I'll be glad to answer any questions.
One comment, my goodness, that's the area. I just got an email from TFC, the county government. The governor is launching a new program today as of August tenth, called Rebuild Virginia. And really quick, new grant program for small businesses and nonprofits. It's in order, about two ten thousand dollars at the present value of August tenth. So another much, you mentioned, good, affords to, a program is on board just to review. Maybe that's something the EDA and others can take advantage of.
Well, I did receive that email today. And that's kind of the direction that we want to go is we don't want to just put our small thing there for the local businesses. Those type of things we put out in marketing as well. The EDA grant, that, and I was very happy to see that because I hadn't seen anything from the state prior to that. But we'll try to leverage every program we have.
Speaking. I'm just sitting here wondering, as we talk about the programs that we're running, in the face of what you have done and your team put together. I'm just wondering that we were sitting here looking at about four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars or not using it. I've been asking the board, we're reconsidering whether or not we want to participate in the Milton Nessla planning a promotion program that they have up and running. You saw the presentation on the other day.
That's a nice website.
But it's another avenue that we can be participating in to, to help local businesses. That the other localities are participating in believing lawfare, but a half million goes to, of theirs towards, towards running that program, so.
Again, question, will our small businesses reach out through that type of forum network to request the money? It would be more comfortable working with people they know in the town. And I would like.
Oh, I didn't get a lot of traction last night. I was trying to get.
I just, I feel like, you know, if we can work out distribution ourselves. You know, it's a fee for them to go. But we, what they were, their ads, I think, was like nine thousand dollars, yeah, something similar to that. I just think that if we can work out a way to distribute the money, that'll be nine thousand dollars more than we can use.
Bobby, after digging into this, can y'all add? Bobby, after digging into this, can y'all add?
Yes, we certainly can. I am blessed to have staff, Dr. Steppen, on. And assuming additional responsibilities.
Then why don't you take a little bit more of this and earmark it a little bit more towards local business really?
We need a marketing campaign.
See, I thought so many.
It's not. It's no requirement in there that the business owner has to be a resident of the county.
The business has to be.
Business owner.
And are we setting guidelines, just like we brought up earlier, that the taxes are paid and all their business licenses are up to date?
So would you like to, I mean, a local business, we got a hundred and seventy-five thousand, if we just like to increase that up to say two hundred fifty thousand?
Well, whatever we would have asked for us on that one, that's what I think we would have taken.
That's fine with me. I want to make sure that we're maximizing use. I just heard a stat the other day that really just kind of shook me, which was something in the order of sixty percent of businesses that closed at the beginning of this are still closed. And if, you know, they're still closed at this point, the likelihood of them reopening is already slim and gets slimmer by the day. So the more that we can utilize this money to try to keep blood flowing until things get back to normal, I'm all for that.
Well, I will be very honest with you. I may have seen my marketing class when I was at university because I really don't like marketing. But what staff and I have been talking about is besides the social media is pizza street, getting out there and just going dropping in and providing information.
That's what you tend to, literally Max Muller, who's the EDA director, was going door to door with flyers.
And, you know, because it is, it's a little daunting. I had talked to one individual this week that knew nothing about any of this. It's clear that we haven't marketed it, but, you know, I made sure that she had the materials and that, you know, she could call me at any point to, you know, walk her through it if she had any misunderstandings or confusion, which will happen. So what I'll do is we kind of came up with a game plan now that y'all have left this and bring that back to y'all office at the work session. But you will go ahead and start getting out and pushing this to the public, so we can start to see the progress.
Do we know how many businesses are closed right now?
Is there any invasion on lines that people can see if they can come and say?
Not yet. I wanted to run this past y'all tonight and make sure you're okay with it. We felt like the application was not invasive, the documentation on what is eligible and what is not, the appeals process. So tomorrow will be the day we start kicking it off. And also tomorrow will be the day that the schools start making expenditures.
And is the concept of those ten that have already received funds, they have to wait, they want to get more, request more, and go back into the.
If they have reimbursements that they can show, then most definitely they can apply. They do have to disclose if they've received those funds, primarily it's federal funds, which of course they did not receive federal funds, we believe that. But since we know who they are and what they were asking for, it will be pretty easy to tell if it's just something different.
And obviously, one more point, because we were talking about this when we talked about the MB cap the other day, was the things that are, can be counted as reimbursements, especially to businesses, it's actually quite lots up. So there's educational component in there too, because Louis said when he was talking to people about it, most just assumed, well, I don't really have any expenses. Okay, well, did you buy some of this? Well, yeah, I bought some of this. Well, you can get it reimbursed. And the more he talked to people about it, the more the applications started coming in for, you know, eight hundred dollars, nine hundred dollars, three thousand dollars, one of the stuff that people had bought that they didn't even consider to be eligible for reimbursement that is.
That's why I think it's so important for us to go out there and truly just talk to people and really do that. And like I said, staff is just really step back. They're just, they're being amazing to people.
Yeah, well, done a great job.
Thank you.
So you have one of the intended new business, ten A, resolution twenty-hash-three-six-seven, personal property tax percentage, personal property point twenty, kill. Sell appears in commission over the revenue.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In your packet, the agenda today, we're asking, or we need to reduce the amount of relief from thirty-five percent to thirty percent this year in order to balance out the funds that we've been given for the tax relief. I completed a spreadsheet since two thousand and seven when we started receiving money from the state in the manner that we are now. And that amount hasn't changed, however, our fleet of personal vehicles has. It's grown at least five percent every year since the exceptions. So therefore, we have less money or the same amount of money to spread over more vehicles every year. So as the value of our fleet goes up, the amount of tax relief we can give based on the state model goes down every year. So we're a little bit in the hole right now as far as what we have gotten from the state for tax relief and what we've been given. And I think that was the board's idea in the past years that they were comfortable with that. But if we want to try and meet the target that's given to us by the state, we need to reduce the amount of tax relief to thirty percent.
We've been doing this in five percent increments. Is that why it doesn't have to be in five percent increments?
No, we can use, we can use.
Okay. You know, I'll say that right now, I don't have a ton of appetite for trying to reduce the amount of relief that we have right now. I understand the formula. I understand that we're, you know, that we missed the mark a little bit last year. But I would, I would not be super comfortable doing this at this juncture. I would like to try to see us hold this level and see, you know, how we get through the end of the year. Because, you know, that becomes a defective tax increase at certain point in time. I don't think anyone's really going to be doing that right now. So I'll entertain another comment on this, but, you know, we've discussed it. We're a little bit, we're a little bit, you know, hand tied by the split levy as far as how much we can allocate to kind of cover this on the backside of it. But at the same time, I mean, that's just a fact of it, guys, does this become, you know, something on the order of what, you're about a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar tax increase or something? We can take it from thirty-five to thirty?
That's what you were saying, is they like to change it to two percent.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I was seeing that, but I would, you know.
Just want to not do it at all, not need to do a two percent thing?
I wouldn't, no. I wouldn't want to see any of that. And then I'd like to reevaluate once we get through this year and see, you know, what's on the floor.
Let's share, let's share our.
So I'll move over to a resolution twenty-three-six, remember it, twenty-three-six R. And so plant that thirty percent, whatever we need to do to word it, to where we hold that.
We need to do anything?
No, I think we need to, we need to adopt it. We need to adopt annually. I think we just need to change the one down here at the bottom where it said equal to thirty percent. Thirty-five percent.
Right, two places.
Where else do you need to see it? The resolution, the statement.
Now, I was setting off.
One more time, we're getting more vehicles in the county.
Yeah.
If not, we're in this party.
Yeah.
There, see, this is the amount of.
This is the.
We need this, we need a set amount of money from the state every year. It's been the same since they adopted the personal property tax rule back, that one point two million now. We have to set a relief percentage that gets us to one point two million now. What other counties have done is especially since it's dead below fifty percent of total value is they've just allocated a general fund money to continue to cover it at that extent. We have not been able to do that because we haven't been able to do it to the extent that other counties have, and we still can't. Because then you've got to run a balance for the left, start using money that was in fact the school to make a difference. I don't think we're in too much danger of that, though, Bobby, if we keep it at thirty-five percent and having to reconcile from the school budget. I don't see where that number would tip us over that is comfortable that we won't run into big trouble keeping it. We would run into bigger trouble if we tried to do more, but, right, yeah, make sure I'm on the right track here. So if we lowered it from thirty-five to thirty, people would get less relief, they would be paying more. If we hold it at thirty-five percent, we've already held the rate level. So there would be, the assessment of the vehicle will probably change. But assuming it didn't, they would pay the same amount of taxes a year as in the last moments, they would pay more. Sure, I'm just saying, I need to treat apples that around here, and then you would pay.
Just had a period of hostility, Sally. Everything I hear in RVs, motorcycles, boats, or they're going out to go like it's crazy. Are we showing any increase?
Well, no, not really, because our, our tax laws, they have a January one. So a lot of that RV and boat buying has been out again in the early one. Next year.
That in itself is. You can, you can buy a hundred fifty thousand dollar RV in January in the whole first year. Sure, I don't think y'all are interested in. This loss revenue, nobody buys a RV for a hundred thousand dollars or whatever, or even if they have any plans that they're not going to pay gross profit taxes.
All this time, we're revisiting, we talked about it before, you know, we made calculations that is, you know, just about wash from the end because then get plenty of people to sell them. You know, market revenue, they got paid the whole year, so.
Well, what is your opinion so far as appropriated for us?
Well, the more urban localities, they do it because they make money off of it. I mean, it's the moneymaker for the county. It's more work.
How many, how many localities, how many localities across the state?
Deuteration?
A large percentage.
Yeah, I would say about seventy percent.
It's a reason.
Yeah, because they make money. And on the flip side of that, when somebody moves out of the county on January the second.
They still have to pay.
They still have to pay for the whole year and y'all probably get some calls about that because they didn't matter if they wanted to do that.
Especially when they move to a rural county.
Yeah. Well, if they go to another locality in Virginia, they can't bill them on the, on the, but if they move out of state, Virginia has no jurisdiction over them. And so like if they moved it to Florida on January the second, they get hit on the front end in Florida with a big bill for their equivalent of the personal property tax. And then they got to pay off too, so they're usually not.
I know, very major saying that he didn't go up to this, to be beneficial, just off the go, do you think it would be?
I think it would probably make money as, as the county becomes more urban, but, you know, if someone has done their problem. But it will relieve some problems too.
Bless the angels.
That's another thing, you know, I think a white elephant, like there are a lot of people.
There's a motion.
Sir, you got a motion?
Yes, he does.
There are.
Right, that's right. Twenty-three-six.
Mr. Biskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodgins?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I may have a subdivision or a revision status update on editor community. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, C.
B.
Oh, B. Oh, yeah, completely stretched, never mind. But they've started with the.
Oh, that's still on thirty-six.
Oh, yeah, that's good. Three sixty, thirty intersection, three sixty apartment.
And you're.
Yes. You will? Whiteout?
Yeah.
You made it to the chief's work. Ten years. Nine. Chad, you would, yeah, shouldn't say. It looks a lot like that.
Page twenty-seven? Yeah. I paid to any. Should be in another. When we have this conversation, I'll show you. Go on, one second. She had page twenty-seven, page twenty-nine, so. Certainly. Scroll down. There we go.
You can be taking your papers.
You might want to, yeah.
That's right.
This is a little update on a smart scale project for the parking lot at Sharon and three sixty. The smart scale project involves improvements to the existing parking lot. The improvements will include, they're going to page the gravel lot, stripe all the spaces. They're going to add handicap spaces, bike racks, they're going to install improved lighting for the entire area. This is all part of our urban development area. Right now, their schedule is for the twenty-first through the twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one in August of twenty twenty-one. Through September twenty-third, we're going to do all the final design surveys and do all the environmental work for that. And. My package out of order. So we had talked to, as Mr. Garber and I discussed, there was some issues concerning the footprint of the parking lot. And under the smart scale program, it's kind of an all or none process. So at this point, we would talk to PDID, the smart scale program, the proceeding as it is shown on this plan right here. And you can see where it's going to be situated. I think it'll be a great improvement to the area, you know, having it paved, striped, good lighting. And I think it would be beneficial for the counties, commuters, so they can park their cars in my chair. Or to work, or to. This one brings us to the board, so you can go ahead and question if you'd all like to.
I know that the neighbor. Especially with the. It's the way, I would also maintenance of that lot with regards to maintenance, trash, trash, stuff like that. Is be not doing anything in this plan to try to mitigate those concerns.
Yes, they. We call this stormwater basins. And part of the drainage. Maken and I have had several conversations, he's had several conversations with PDID, I have conference calls with smart scale people. One of the directives for the smart scale project is that it will ease maintenance of the facility. And once they make the drainage improvements, PDID is ensuring everyone is stable. One of the reasons this got approved in the smart scale program was to lower the maintenance of the area to the drainage there.
This, this was presented to a previous board. I don't know how far back it goes. I've also, I've also spoken.
Oh, no, but this guy has a project going on. It initially, Maken, it wasn't super happy.
Originally, it was supposed to be this per year and like twenty spots there. But the fundamental fact is that property right there allows sustained drainage right there. You know, native, which it is in front of a large part of this property, but all three sixties used to run through that. Sharon Rowan was all three sixty.
Sharon.
And they extended that right away. At some point in time, they decided to make a small parking lot that was never named that. I mean, at some point in time, they decided to make a small parking lot that was never named that. This is gonna be lit, and, uh, I'm, you know, I feel for him, I really do, but. Uh, when you buy a piece of property, you do by work and all of that, maybe a survey, you know what I'm saying? And my wife, plenty of times, she's met people and had to talk to that, they want, or they don't. This is, will be a secure place.
Sure, no, I've got, I think it's fine, I just wanna make sure that we're in communication with, with, you know, the neighbor and, and try to do what we can to keep him happy, because I know, and we all know, firsthand, probably from one experience or another, that VDOT does not sell constituents' services, so.
Well, I understand that too, but, uh, either, either we take the project as any of this, we can modify it, correct?
Correct. If we do, we lose the project completely. Now, there is some wiggle room, um, if, as they're going through the design phase of this, and the costs get, see ten percent, they can lower the scope of work for it within ten percent. Um, and so that, there is a chance that it might be a slightly smaller footprint, but I'm, I'm, I wouldn't hold out for that. And as far as, uh, the Jason Parvner, I have met him many few times discussing, uh, recently, Thursday, uh, discussing the project and where it was going, I've kept him up to date, and he, of course, not happy about it. He does a lot of VDOT work, and he understands how this project works for him. He's not an irate citizen at this point.
Well, it, it's that type of communication that is required to get that out, so, thank you. That was basically what my question was. We're making him aware of the steps that, you know, that are being taken in the process, and he knows where everybody is settled, most happy.
Didn't he have some complaints about your entrance or something, on the old, so?
Yeah, they were just driving over.
Driving. I knew there was some.
Well, actually, actually, the Virginia State on right away, actually, I can see. I remember what I seen on that growing. Yeah, it's a city mosque, drive. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a whole route three sixty.
That's a misfire, yeah.
No, this is, this is not his project.
I think he owns a damn site.
He, he does. And certainly, if it was me, I wouldn't be happy either, but it's, it's a project that we need, not me.
And it is moving forward.
I had, I had a recent conversation with him, about moving twice, and cross the P, and on the hill, need those, he understands.
Yeah, we're good. I was only, you're next up, Jim?
We're not here for a while.
You are?
Yeah, you are.
C, yeah, we're on C. Subdivision ordinance revision status update.
Gentlemen, a little update on where we stand on the revisions to subdivision ordinances. I had, uh, staff sent out requests, direct mail, through Facebook, and on the county website, uh, looking for comments on the subdivision, and posted the draft, so that I would have a chance to look at the entire twenty-three-sixth page document. We requested that they reply with their comments for July, July thirty-first, so we just filled a few minutes. Uh, we have received some comments, uh, the majority of the comments are concerned with lot sizes for family subdivisions, agricultural zone, and lot sizes. I think it's you on that, uh, the funding requirements, and the standards for minor subdivisions out in agricultural zone. We've also had a number of suggestions come through, uh, comments about backdoor chicken ordinances for residential areas, since that national training now. We allow for some chickens. But along with that, we've gotten a lot of complaints about roosters in residential areas. So, um, that's some of the comments that come in, suggestions on that. Um, we also received some, uh, suggestions that we take a closer look at, uh, how we have the home occupations, especially with, you know, transchores farming out in the rural residential and in the AC, smaller farms. Um, there's been some suggestions about tweaking some of the language that we have, and, um, there's a whole lot of, uh, there hasn't been a great amount of comments received so far, uh, but I'm pretty sure that number of concerns citizens, that they will provide staff with more comments on these ordinances by Friday. Uh, following that, uh, we'll compile the comments in preparation for a public forum that we would like to, uh, host, uh, middle of August, and to bring everybody together, um, to voice opinions and why they feel ordinance should be made in one way or another, and get a really good feel for the public comment, or how the public feels about how we're moving forward.
So comments to date somewhere visible to everyone, connecting them and reporting them as well, that's visible?
Not, I'm not gonna do a rolling every time, I'm compiling them now, it's like, get them in, I start working on my spreadsheet, so that when we do the public forum, I can present some of the comments to spur the conversation. But I have no, uh, it'd be very difficult from every phone call I did, every conversation I had, uh, to keep a running tally of that, of people with that, and I haven't received that in.
You mentioned all the extensions and tools?
Oh, no, I mean, you can, public comments, we're gonna take until I go to the planning commission with the first public hearing. We'll take public comments all the way through the process, uh, right until it gets to y'all for the public hearing from here, so. The, the July thirty-first was just so I could, uh, compile those kind of comments to focus a public year, a public forum for all the different parties and stakeholders, uh, because it is a very big deal in how the county's gonna develop, and, you know, this leaves us right in conflict and.
It's kind of useful to use comments from someone to spur, uh, spark new ideas and other ideas instead of duplicating. It's a very difficult test, but. I hope that's something.
Oh, thanks, Brian, I think I did send a personal invite to, uh, supervisors. Uh, but that is where we stand right now, um, as far as the process goes about soliciting public transportation, and sending these draft ordinances out, so that we can, um, finally get them adopted and solid for the county.
You just, you're going to close this in the year?
A lot of it depends on the public comments I receive. Um, I'm thinking, um, the public forum, you know, I'm, right now, I'm only planning on one, but if that generates a lot of conversation, um, then we'll extend, we'll have a second public forum, um, so that'll take me in September, so by the end of the year, I think we should be having the public hearings.
I told you, I'm gonna ask you a lot of questions.
Move on to ten, the twenty-two smart scale resolution twenty-eight forty-three. This is resolution twenty dash forty-three, supporting the Kingway and Towny smart, uh, smart scale project, uh, that we call the mixed-use trail. It's another smart scale project that you just put applications in on. The, uh, smart scale application is being prepared for dismissal for the construction of a shared use pedestrian bicycle trail. The trail will extend from about Kelly Lane to Route, um, Route thirty north to Highway three sixty intersection, approximately twenty-three hundred, uh, linear feet. The trail extends north of Highway three sixty to the intersection of Route thirty and Pine Press Lane, which is the recreation lane that's right there at the state park or county park. And that's gonna be about eighteen hundred linear feet of trail, and it will include an at-grade crossing at Sharon Road from the Kingway High School. The purpose of the project is to address safety issues for people crossing the thirty-three sixty intersection to and from high school. It will address safety issues around the shopping areas at the intersection as well, and it'll provide paths to and from the shopping area from the neighborhood to Long Route thirty. We were, uh, the county was notified of the smart scale application deadline, uh, April first, twenty twenty. After meeting with the staff at the school to VDOT office, a decision was made to submit a project to address the safety issues surrounding the traffic, pedestrian, pedestrian activities along Route thirty, crossing over three sixty. Planning and zoning, uh, staff submitted the mixed-use pedestrian bicycle trail project on April first. As far as the application process, a resolution supporting the smart scale project is submitted by the board of supervisors as required. In addition, the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission is usually included in the formal support request, and we have received, uh, Middle Peninsula's signed, uh, resolutions supporting this project in the county. And they have extended the deadline for, uh, completing the application, uh, without, there's some additional information looking for from us, and formal support by the board of supervisors are in, y'all's resolution, uh, as long as I have that about August seventeen deadline, uh, that will work for the smart scale. And in January, VDOT will release the project priorities and base allocation scenarios, this will be presented to the Commonwealth Transportation Board. Projects approved within the smart scale framework will receive notification in June of twenty twenty-one. Those projects approved will be funded and fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and no county funds are required as match for this project. Staff is recommending that the board of supervisors approve resolution twenty dash forty-three. And, uh, your packet, you see the resolution, I do wanna point out, and the ordinance, there is a typo, y'all could, where it says cup O eight twenty, that would be O two twenty, wherever it says conditional use permit.
Make it ahead of yourself.
Oh, sorry. This is resolution, sorry, this is resolution on this.
Get to Nick.
Yeah.
Um, all right, I'll approve a resolution twenty dash.
Mr. Biskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
So, in the interest of safety, while we're talking about, we, we, we watch that bridge on Sharon Road, where, it's really on that.
Yes, sir, uh, I actually was talking to Joyce McAllen, and she started getting on, uh, on that particular project. They're actually having to get some units for stormwater drainage, uh, which they haven't completely acquired. And they're also using that, uh, closed road as a staging area while we're doing the thirty-three sixty. So it's a while out before, but they are, they had initially approached us about abandoning that road, and we said no, and they stood why. Um, but they are planning eventually to reopen that road, but the big holdup right now is the drainage. Is it twenty-one?
As long as I can watch that, two, long than that, it's gonna work.
I wouldn't get sick.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, I mean, that is what it is, we've had, we've had, we've had, we watched out longer, um, we wish we did. Yeah, and December, we're not gonna fix it. But, uh, you know, we'll, we'll, that is enough, obviously, the thirty-three sixty project is a priority to done, and, uh, we'll just hold.
I would carry in consideration of eight minutes twenty, proposing to construct a twenty-four by fifty-six point six foot attached accessory dwelling in agricultural conservation district. The applicants, Tatcha and Kelly Kay, are requesting a conditional use permit in order to construct a twenty-four by fifty-six and a half foot attached accessory dwelling. The proposed accessory dwelling is to be located at sixty-five eighty-five Mount Hall of Coho Road. I'll do what Travis can bring up the next slide. Oh. Um, this will be located at sixty-five eighty-five Mount Hall of Coho Road, tax map parcel fifty-three one dash one. The property consists of ten point six eight acres, it's mostly cleared with woods located to the left and near the property. There's currently a single family home located on property that was constructed in two thousand and seven. The property is owned agricultural and is located in the courthouse system. This provides a narrow view of the location of, uh, the property itself. In your packet, uh, we included all the attachments, um, including the application itself, meaning as used. Uh, we did run public notice, legal ads were run in the February review on July fifteenth and July twenty-second, twenty twenty, for the board of supervisors' public hearing, notices to adjacent parvenants were mailed in July eighth. Stat closes signed from the proxy on June twelfth, indicating that there is an independent acting providing contact information. This area consists of primarily of residential towns and farmland, all predominantly, uh, five acres or greater. Uh, one of the goals of the con plan is to encourage development of a variety of housing types to accommodate current and future citizens, and very major citizens in life. And one of the implementation strategies of our comprehensive plan is to permit options for accessory and secondary housing for family members wanting care. Uh, we looked at the conditional use permit, uh, and this project meets all of the conditional use permit requirements, uh, for recommending approval of a conditional use permit. On a public hearing was held at the July seventh regular meeting of the police mission. The planning commission voted five to zero to approve the application of, with one condition, that the accessory dwelling shall be occupied by immediate family. So little things on, uh, this is where the lot sits, in relation to the other lots. I saw the frontage.
This is in no way a complaint or anything, uh, they, they already started being structured.
It, it started out as an addition, and once they realized they wanted to turn it into, um, an accessory dwelling, then they came.
As you know, I'm rude to me with it, and there's no objection to any of the neighbors that I've hired.
And there have been no comments received at the public hearing or through the, uh, community development department concerning this project.
Okay, one thing, you're not gonna really notice it, to be honest.
And that is, the pictures here, you can see the area, you, you'll never even see this.
On, on that side, most of the lots were ten plus it on that side of the river.
That, that's, um, the pictures that we're showing, just gonna give y'all a feel of the, um, the situation. Um, staff does recommend, and the planning commission voted five to zero to approve conditional permit to twenty, and, uh, as I, uh, referred to before, the ordinance does. referred to before, the ordinance does have a typo in it, it just needs to say oh two twenty, C U P oh two twenty. And it says C U P oh eight twenty.
Two, is it changed?
Like wherever it says C U P oh two, it should be changed from oh eight to oh two.
Mr. Chairman, I move to your call.
Well, yeah, we got public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now that's it.
Over here. Yeah. If you have a hearing open, citizen speaking, it's a individual three minutes group time to say name and address. Or, or yes. It's like more, oh, well, oh, nobody's on line there. Oh, now, now, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ordinance zero eight dash.
Zero two.
Zero two dash twenty.
Right.
I changed the C U B part.
The title is eight.
Oh, what, the ordinance, oh eight twenty.
Your ordinance is oh eight twenty, but all right, leave me alone now.
And C U P.
The C U P is zero two dash.
Second whatever, whoever you're.
I guess it'd be R, right?
Or whether it's just a type.
Any other discussion? Mr. Florence?
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Robert?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Next, we have dinner, our rescue of a man, Emily is not in this evening, so we're going to have a new fire chief. I just see a slip right out of my head.
Gentlemen, I had planned on allowing Laura, who has been the interim fire chief for the last almost year, to introduce Stacy, but she is unable to attend tonight. So as of August first, Stacy agrees to be soon to be permanent fire chief in emergency service position, and Laura and Emily will step in back into the assistant chief position. And so soon to be chief, Reeve, has offered to go ahead and cover the information update tonight.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity to serve community count. And I'll start with Laura's brief staffing. Struggling vacation periods and open positions that we were approved and struggling to fill them due to the COVID crisis. We have recently started aggressively advertising with great results. Facebook has been a really good avenue for advertising. We got over ten thousand touches on just the firefighter position. So that's, that's been a good thing for us just over a week, having several, several weeks with no responses. We, we, I think it was around seven or eight applications coming from qualified people. So we'll start interviewing next week when our, we talk about that. One of our guys took a job in Portsmoke. He is a young man who is seeking fire, finding. So he went for the thrill of being enforcement. So he kind of maintains his position here part-time, so he'll study and assist us. We're trying to improve our part-time physician pool to help us get through the crisis of the COVID conditions while we reach out and try to make sure that we're hiring qualified people through the process of tweeting out after, after the fact. Having said, we have had almost ten days and that's almost where there is two or below in staffing. It's kind of hard to understand, but when you look at it from the perspective of two hundred feet square miles, that's two people serving every citizen in the middle of this camp, central garage out to the median area and down to this one. With Walkerton coming in from seven, they're primarily providing first response of fire, not transport or especially advanced life care. So it's, it's pretty important that we address these things as we move forward. We are down an engine on our apparatus. Our engine went out for repairs. It's been gone for a couple of weeks. We are using a rental to get us through. It's been kind of tough with this, but we should have that engine back and everything on it that they could identify. And we are really close to under budget, having additional repairs that we didn't expect for what we had expected to spend. We put our new ambulance in service. It's a five fifty wheel coach. There were some issues with the stretcher, lift system that was in there, and address my stretcher that would be moved. So that's why I said. And it's pretty much with the, pretty much it on the apparatus. Station one's broadband has been installed, it's open one. It's actually better than what we have here. The speeds are incredible, uploading and downloading. So that's going to enhance our ability to report out more quickly and not have failures on our IPads when we're trying to upload it stuff through image stream. Station one is still currently closed due to COVID nineteen pandemic, especially due to the high risk that we incurred and out to the six citizens, which I assume is the one ready for all prior station. Having said that, being that the hall is part of that building where this is going to be closed have a safer area for people. Our PPE levels are great as far as equipment goes. All our personnel have been instructed to wear masks in the public. Understand it's sometimes difficult to remember, but we push it after them. We try to be as strict as we can to make sure that they're, especially since they see certain people there since. The beginning stages of demoralization for COVID nineteen, state of emergency has been put together. However, many practices put in place during this may continue to be normal for us. That statement, I think, is kind of, it's kind of hard to understand because it seems like we're doing more than we were in the beginning. In the beginning, we were trying to figure out what to do and how, due to results coming back in, the state and federal government are realizing that we need to do to keep this all safe. So that's a good question. Some additional information coming on now. All of our fit testing for N nine five and C M U eight have been completed, with the exception of a few people who are part-time, who were employed in departments that refused to let them work here during the pandemic crisis until it started to ease up a little bit. So those folks will get reached out to. But all of them have been tested by our. We have a couple of notes. Lieutenant Larson, this is a part-time lieutenant for us, has been working on our emergency port QA to ensure our quality of service. He's worked really hard with coordination and industry to improve that. We're currently working on the backside of our industry program so that it will automatically notify us of certain types of calls as we can review that, ensure that cardiac arrest, strokes, hospital calls are being addressed perfectly. And then I would like to personally just reach out to Walkerton Fire Department and thank them for some service that they provided us that we didn't have to a little while back. Couple of weeks ago, we had a fire on Mount Hall of Cove, and unfortunately, the house was not salvageable. We had two different red panels on that. One was after the house was burned in the next night, which you can sometimes check that occurring when you're in your fire. But then after they started to remove that house and follow the three, I think, going apart again, we responded down. Chief, I believe he's Assistant Chief now, Rodney Coleman, who used to be the chief for years and years, and now is son Jason, Assistant Chief. Assistant Chief Coleman came down with one young member on their tanker. They, they got there before we did, to the distance, I arrived, helped them get the lines before we put the fire out. I put our engine back in service. We had a failure on our engine. And those guys finished putting the fire out, and they were both, they both responded from home. They kind of told us. And Mr. Coleman told me before that, we were just letting them know that he was just seeing service. So they went back to the firehouse and sat and covered our perp footage and sent the garage until we could get our engine back in service. We had a waitress by the chest for it. I just like to thank them.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank you, Larry, thank you for putting it all on the map. And you guys are also the volunteers.
Yes, sir.
They are people that, they volunteer, they receive nothing for the services of them, they gratitude the help of you. Thank everyone. Thank you.
How many apologies do we have right now?
For the county or?
For the county.
For the county.
Well, actually, Station one, I guess.
Station one, we, we only have a handful, five or six. We have two people that consistently volunteer. They do a ambulance ride every other Friday. And we have a, a three or four that meander in and out that are pre-qualified for a couple of positions. We really don't have that many up there that come ride. Magaic and West Point, I can't speak for.
Which is, is Magaic supplementing also? So it's paid personnel.
I don't think so.
No, not at all.
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that, no, Magaic's not, West Point did.
Yeah, so.
And they just weren't in the.
Are you hitting him? No, sir, not, not at this point. I reached out to dispatch to get some call by information for you guys on your future, but I haven't gotten a response. I, I'm not sure about their staffing. At this point, I haven't met with them personally to go over that stuff. And I'm just waiting for it to be after I take the position, if I'm able to make it, to kind of feel out what they need and where they are. Absolutely, it's, it's one of my top priorities.
I'd like to say that the November tenth court session is going to be dedicated to firing events, talking about volunteers. The board has brought that up multiple times.
Close.
What did I say?
I don't remember. What she actually said.
August, court session. And what the assistant chief and the chief are planning to do is request that the volunteer chiefs come as well so that you can get a full picture of where we're at and give some guidance, ask some questions. And then they can kind of take some directed at that point, right on the new chief role.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you. I was just an ongoing challenge for the better part of my term of service on this board. You know, I, I think Laura did a really good job of laying some groundwork, you know, needs some strong leadership at your position. So, yeah, the board working with you, it's successful.
Appreciate that.
We'd like some strong leadership for a long time.
I don't, they don't go anywhere. Thank you. Thank you.
Ten G, Resolution twenty dash forty-four, Mr. Bill Hodges.
I'm not quite sure how I, I, I got that resolution, other than, other than it coming in, I think many of you got the same thing.
Kind of like I guess it's got to read in one of the statements, read it.
But I would like to propose that we do accept Resolution twenty dash forty-four. It's just a short version that I will read, but acknowledgement that we will not impose laws against citizens that own and possess firearms in a legal manner now and are not criminal. I guess it's a simple way of putting it. Whereas an acknowledgement of its deep commitment to the rights of all citizens and visitors to King William County to keep and bear arms. King William County Board of Supervisors previously declared King William County to be a Second Amendment sanctuary. And whereas certain legislation has been passed in the Virginia General Assembly that allows localities to buy ordinance and otherwise lawfully possessed and transported firearms from certain public spaces, causing law-abiding citizens to be exposed to patchwork of local ordinances as they travel throughout Commonwealth. And whereas the King William County Board of Supervisors acknowledges significant economic contribution contribution made to our community by tourists and visitors and does not wish to discourage travel to King William County. And whereas King William County wishes to welcome all law-abiding citizens who wish to live in, visit, or otherwise participate in the economy of our community, including those citizens and visitors who choose to legally carry a firearm for personal protection. And whereas the King William Board of Supervisors does not wish to infringe on the rights of citizens or visitors to King William County to keep and bear arms. And whereas the King William County Board of Supervisors wishes to express its continued opposition to any law that would unconstitutionally restrict the rights of citizens and business to King William County even bear arms. Now therefore, it be resolved that Board of Supervisors, King William County, Virginia, that King William Board of Supervisors hereby declares King William County, Virginia shall not exercise any authority granted to it by section fifteen dash fifteen point two dash nine fifteen E of the Code of Virginia to regulate or prohibit the otherwise lethal purchase, possession, or transfer of firearms or ammunition.
Is that motion to a doubt?
Yes.
Second.
Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Robert?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Straightened management, county administration.
The board information is the standard information that you generally receive. Though I did receive notice of one thing. Mr. Charles Walsh, the executive director of the Middle Peninsula, will know that the service board will be retiring effective August thirty-first after thirty-seven years of service. And so I will be bringing a resolution of appreciation to the office board meeting to acknowledge your service.
Board of Supervisors, current. Thank you.
May I ask a few questions?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that's, that's, I didn't know I had any questions, I would say.
Well, why is fanatic about checking the code of positive numbers, multiple numbers? Where does that come, that comes from three rivers or is that, who does it fortune in the county?
If yourself are a chief. The numbers on the V D H website, that comes from three rivers. And we're reporting that the numbers are reported.
We have no idea of where, who, what, when, other than it's double in the last month.
We do, Sheriff, are you still being notified of the individuals?
I am not.
You're not?
I am not. It puts me off with those things.
This first story, the sheriff and the chief of fire, we asked them to move behind, I would be petrified. But I wasn't aware that they were no longer doing that. But V D H has made a lot of different changes over the last couple of months.
Concerned is that it continues to think, but you don't know how many people have come back from COVID. Nightingale, so I'll say yesterday, that's only one had died. Something's wrong somewhere, but we're concerned that the chief think, but we don't have any data. But we're concerned that the chief is thinking maybe that we don't have any data with those that are off the list at all. Which to me is pretty important. If there's any way to get that, you know.
Have, have we had any physical testing in King William County? Any complaints? As far as asking them.
There was. I just found one today. This Mitchell put it up here.
Perfect last or?
It was. Didn't Middlesex do one also, I thought, early on?
Yeah, thank you. It's just weird.
Dr. Richards has stated that he does plan on doing one with William. The problem is, is getting them sacking. If you know those B D H is hiring for individuals to ban those. Um, plus they want to try to get loaded in the masks where everybody's lined up in their cars waiting. We tried to do a different approach. But I will speak with Dr. Richards and I'll see if he has time to either pull something together or send someone from his department to become his chief of board system. And you can, um, where the numbers are coming from and what you're seeing.
You see that scale every morning when I watch sex. You see that scale of positives and all that, the great statistical chart. Certainly. We don't just understand that we're doing, we're doing well, I think, in terms of speaking. But is it something we can do better? I don't see as many masks in public areas as I could see, but.
Fortunately, we're not doing good. We've just added to the list on Friday. People come from other states. If they come to Virginia now, they cannot go back without quarantine and quarantine. We were just added because of the quarter. And it's like quarter in all the cases in Virginia Beach and Hampton Roads, we got shot up. Ain't nobody come from New Jersey, New York, all the states up north, come to Virginia after quarantine for fourteen days before they go back.
I'm sure they're all about.
Oh, thank you. But that's, you weren't on the list before.
We might be on the list, but I don't know who's in the course in there.
Oh, man, I know. So who's going to stop you? The border patrol is pulling on for the center for quarantine days.
Does that come to be a HIPAA issue? Not having, you know, public? Is that because of HIPAA?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what is the question?
The data reporting on COVID positive cases, two one in particular, not knowing who they are, or at least even the district. Is that a HIPAA issue? You not going to know?
No, no, I, I, I think one of the reasons why they kept the data deliberately kind of vague is to protect people's privacy. At least that's what I read.
Whether or not it's a HIPAA thing, I couldn't tell you because, you know, HIPAA doesn't cover all things that people think covers. You know, especially if you're not a healthcare provider at the same time.
Yeah.
You'll notice that as, and especially at the beginning of this, as positive cases started showing up and especially some of the rural counties, there's a lot of sleepwalking being done, especially on social media to try to figure out who it was.
Yeah.
Right? And I, I think the health department was keenly aware of, of, of that type of stigma that was being placed upon you and the idea that somebody in your neighborhood was infected with it. And we're working to try to prevent hysteria.
Those, those, and they're returning, they're not dead, but they're helping to act to work, or whatever you go. But it just continues to increase. You just follow what's going on?
Some people have re-invested. How do you know? Everyone said it in the numbers.
Yeah, I think, I think the message from the health department is pretty clear that the case numbers are upticking in frequency currently.
Well, probably the largest problem is the people who have no symptoms whatsoever. They own social distance, slotting them. You know, they, they want to get out, you know. If they think that they don't have any symptoms, it's a large number of people that don't have symptoms. So we're asking, you know, we're doing everything we can to, right?
Because those people, if they had asked for some funds to be served, we need to go and send them out. I think there's a lot of.
Right. The, um, they came back and stated that B D H had been able to fund them in another approach. That's one of the issues that Dr. Richards had brought up on one of his calls was the, the state stepped in and given them a different great deal of additional responsibility, but then had not been forthcoming with funding at that point. And so we was going to be, you know, if we needed to rely on the localities within the district and then what we would do at the end of the year is basically bring you back. But B D H actually was saying to the whole place, it's under you.
Give us one, you know, immediate funding, write, writing checks immediately. We didn't give you any of that authority, the chair's not explicitly.
Yes, and the first time I brought it to you, the board approved the appropriation and the truce. We have only expended, at this point, the county's first.
Yeah, we, we gave her that authority in that resolution, but we said that we would then crack with, with her and her team.
I was just thinking, expenditure is a rather immediate, not, rather than save itself for work session or forty. But she, she had an authority to.
I think we gave her that. She can see, go ahead and do that.
I'll see how much.
I would think we put a little bit on the whole, the whole amount. Yes.
Yeah.
And only that we would have input in it as far as advising or recommending. But other than that, she probably rate the check off every day.
That's why I have this documentation that's been put together so that you know the parameters that we have to live with them. And that's also why I wanted the town manager and the town treasurer involved in project teams. So we got someone outside looking as well as what the county is looking.
Does it need another?
Yes, it does.
Except for, except for.
Except for.
Saying like, do you think you did for that? That's one of the areas there's.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure you have enough flexibility. We got, that's maybe.
And just one other thing, one of seven five does announce the numbers for the counties, but they do not break it down in further.
It's on the CDC.
Well, they're getting tighter, like.
I think they're running a little bit behind.
Well, they're all running behind. First, the first conference call that we had regionally with the health department. You know, they said those numbers can change rapidly because they're getting test numbers back. You know, you as an individual get tested, say five, let's go get tested. Well, Ed could get his result back in twenty-four hours. He can take any fourteen days, just depending on what lab it goes to, you know, and, and how quickly this thing needs to be processed. So, you know, that's the other thing that the health department was, and I imagine they're still having a hard time pinning down, which is how long have these people been infected? Is this result somebody who is just recently infected and they're out there in the community? Or is it somebody who was infected and now may be, you know, uh, you know, no longer infectious?
Yeah, you would like to think that when somebody was, because they had to do the form and give the test that they would sell foreign things. Some people.
Ah, we would think that it's not going to get.
Yeah, I know. You would, you would hope that that happened. Been so bad out there. Said they're eating that COVID before it's what people.
Yeah, no, they're infected. COVID before it's too.
Oh, thanks. That's what it is.
The website, the website. The city was just being contacted. That's, they're still engaged and they're still helping build.
No, the, um, the website is online, but they are still are basically our resource. But at the same time, they've trained us on how to administer. They make the changes.
Do you know a formal process to input? The closing minutes or information is to report the fact. And really, what is the difference in signing the name versus? Is there anything here that I cannot find? Because you can register to have a talk.
Yeah, you can sign up for any information to get sent to you. Like if I were to add board supervisor things, you can sign up to have that. Any thing related to board supervisor sent directly to you every time I upload it. Any citizen can have anything related to whatever they'd like sent directly to them immediately.
But I would recommend that maybe that's one of the sorts that citizens can fill out and submit to you when they have a, and they recognize a, 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 a difficulty in finding the information. And I, I know most of it's just a learning process, where it was, where it is now. But I'm, I have a heck of a time trying to do certain things. So I have comments.
Do you use our search bar? Do you use the search bar? As soon as you get on the homepage, it's the very first thing you see, right in the middle of the page. Yeah.
Now, sorry. To, uh, the council, I'll start with one today.
You want to start with one?
Yeah.
Two is one.
You're, you're.
No, one.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Just trying to remember some of the things that came up during the meeting. The delinquent taxes, we're not forgetting them. We're not letting them go. We're, we are pushing for those items because we are very aware. Mr. Couch were very open and looking at your situation. We, we don't, this board, I had learned real quick, this board that you have right now does look, you may not hear everything we discuss, of course, but we are looking at many things that need to be addressed. You know, I thank everybody for coming out and safe trip home. Stay as safe as you can. All this going on, I wish it was over and I had hoped that by this time of the summer that it would have been gone. But obviously the heat didn't kill it. Y'all have a good ease.
Um, so I think ultimately last month's discussion with the treasurer and some of the information that was presented to us by the county administrators, especially in some of the material that she prepared ahead of the discussion, shed a light on an issue that we, we have there that maybe we, I think some of us were more aware than others. And certainly I don't think any of us were aware of the depth of the issue there. Um, now that we are, um, you know, it's certainly exposed to need for further investigation of their policies and practices in our office. The county administrator is undertaking that investigation, actually. Um, and, you know, we're, we're, we're going to find out where the break is and why things aren't happening the way that they're supposed to. Because, you know, these are duly elected officers of the public and their accountability is ultimately to the public. But as was pointed out tonight, they're responsible for an awful lot of, you know, what makes us and what makes schools successful and able to operate. And so, you know, we've got a role to play in making sure those offices are operating properly. We plan to undertake that effort. Uh, which pivots right into Mr. Couch's comments earlier tonight. And, and I think I speak for the entire board, but there's no member up here that thinks that the thirty-one thousand dollar expenditure of legal fees is, with regards to your issue, was something that we agreed with. Uh, and, and that particular item ended up something the board has since started to work on developing a policy to prevent that from happening again, gatekeeper of sorts, and how offices outside of the county administrator and forward control offices can access our legal services. Um, and to what extent they can, you know, rapid or bill like that, because I think we were all shocked ultimately at the number. Um, as far as speaking out publicly, and I think maybe to put Mr. Hodges' point a, a little finer, because I don't want it to sound like it's not transparent, but I don't think any board member up here wants to be put in a position where we're making promises that we can't keep as we investigated this matter. And obviously in a limited scope that we've been able to for a long time due to, you know, Zoom meetings and only being able to discuss certain issues for several months out of this year. Yours not among them, among the allowable discussions that we have in some of those Zoom sessions. Now that we're back to it, we've had several meetings with, with the attorney about options that are available to us to seek a resolution. Um, some of those have not been legally allowable so far. We continue to discuss it. We're going to continue to discuss it tonight. It's, it's not an issue of transparency. It's an issue of, you know, protected attorney-client discussions that need to happen. Um, so this board has been working on a solution and the desire of this board is to come to a resolution. Um, because certainly, A, we don't want the, our, our county attorney's budget to be used pursuing, uh, you know, a situation like this. None of us think that that was necessarily the, the right course of action. And that's not, the attorney was doing his assigned job at the time. Now we've, you know, we're going to institute a policy that alters how he's accessed in that manner. But, uh, again, don't want to make any promises we can't keep, but we want a resolution seeking one. Okay. Um, I want to thank the rest of my board members tonight for taking action to prevent a tax increase in, in this current climate. Uh, you know, while probably minor in the scheme of things, you know, we, we hold the line on that right now. And thanks for joining me and taking that action. And thanks to Ms. Tastner and her team for the great work that's been done on how we use the discovered response. Might spend a lot of work from you guys. You guys have been very transparent with us throughout the process and how, how you develop these policies and what we're going to use for in the justification. Thank you among all the other things we've had going on to have this dropped on you and to respond with. Really appreciate it.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. All things considered, we have pretty good trails in there. I'd like to tell the new fire chief, I'm glad we have a new fire chief and look forward to working with you. And Travis has sent us a man also. You know, I know it's a lot of public outcry out there asking us to answer questions. And we haven't had an overwhelming debate. Everything's in a closed session. So we're bound by law and I'm sorry. So, you know, we, we definitely want a resolution and we are working towards a resolution. Also, so far as the treasurer is concerned, I appreciate the people coming here tonight and voicing again for that thing. All of us on board with that. And I am very aware, I never thought privately in the same way, long before I was elected, I had conversations with Mr. Pretty much the same thing he felt with you, Mr. Hodges. But, uh, anyway, it's our priority that, that he has to be up to. But he did also tell us that it would be very easy for him to put delinquent taxes on the county website. It hasn't happened yet. It's been a long one. I don't know how easy it is. Maybe, maybe it's a tough. But that way everybody could, uh, could look at it and see the scope of it and into some kind of. Anyway, thanks again. Speaking of, you know, the more people that can say something about it, the greater the chances are that we can make a move. Thank you.
I'd reiterate what Mr. Moskowski mentioned, Mr. Couch has shown. People are looking at it, people are working on it. I'm, I sat here and came to meetings for three years. I think it's been, it's getting up here to actually experience the agonizing slowness of Haynesham County government. It's frustrating. Appreciate the patience. As well as the tax special ready, which is covered, this is covered. That's right. And I think we're going to get some visibility long overdue, get some changes made, I hope. Not only those, but perhaps even bigger changes coming in the future. Appreciate everybody coming to these meetings. To sit on Facebook and watch some of the hosts. I'll be nice. You haven't seen them here. And this is where it happens. This is where visibility, where the ones that come to speak, get involved. We appreciate it. Thank you, stay safe, stay cool. I've been to some hot places, places around the world. Oh, hell.
Makes you want to go to Minot, doesn't it?
Reiterate everything everybody else said. Thanks for coming. We did have a very large trail. I almost thought maybe some people were a little too focused together for the access of. But it's good to see everybody. And we had quite a few people on Zoom too. Good meeting, glad that one, looks like we're going to keep that going from now on. People can't make it, one of them being one of them can watch the meeting and resume now and says, I haven't come here in person. And I did want to reiterate that some of the things that were said about the two elected officers, I was just counting them. Constitutional, because it's similar to what we have with the school board. We tell where the money goes at the school board, but if we say a hundred percent goes to children and they decide a hundred percent goes to teachers, that's what happens. We don't have any control over it once it happens. The same thing with this. Treasurer's office and the commissioner's office, we can suggest things. That's what nobody understands, but hey, here's what they want. That's unfortunate. Travis and I, now that over the years, we have attorneys mention things that goes in one ear and out the other. So all we can do, I just want people to know that, like Mr. Couch said, he thinks, well, I would think that it's just a quick thing. Like we have been working on it. Definitely, you know, you're very upset with all of that. I'm glad that Ms. Tastner, you know, you've been all over both those departments coming up soon about the end of the year. And welcome to the new fire chief. Sorry that it's late today, but good luck and. And welcome to the new fire chief. I'm sorry that it's late today, but good luck and, uh, we look forward to working with you too. Thank you very much. I hope you stay safe. Like our numbers are the one of it. Warren said, unfortunately, just keep. People say that it should mask so negative, so, and we do. Can't let's keep wearing a mask, keep this and things, just to, just to be safe. I mean, even if you don't believe in it, that's, I mean, it's all that quibble. I mean, it doesn't really matter. It's just a mask. Let's just do it. Try to make everybody safe. And the gun thing was good, was Bill brought up. We had a lot of people calling about that, so that's just for the second amendment likes for the citizens to, to our rural county, and I think that's something that we. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight seven of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board supervisor convene in closed meeting to consult legal counsel consultants and or staff on a matter of actual litigation with counties involved in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight eight of the Code of Virginia, uh, requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel on a tax matter. And, uh, in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven of eight, uh, eleven eight one, to consider a personnel matter involving appointments of individuals to boards and commissions.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Robert?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Uh, we're in the second session, thanks.